Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February 1st, 2011. It's 6:30 PM. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor Meeker.
Here.
Councilmember DeStefano.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the January 18th City Council Meeting and the January 25th City Council Workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
I move approval.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, proclamation recognizing White Cane Days. Mr. Lewis, please. Could we have representative or representatives of the Lions, please?
Oh, do we?
We got a few of them. Whereas the Palm Coast Lions Charities Incorporated is a member of District 35-0 of Lions International, and whereas the aforementioned Lions Charities Incorporated has a major project, the helping of sightless and the sight afflicted, and will contribute thousands of dollars and many hundreds of hours to this effort in 2011. And whereas this money will be contributed to the Conklin Center for the Multi-Handicap Blind, North Florida Eye Bank, School for Leader Dogs, Braille Association of Mid-Florida, Florida School for the Deaf and Blind, Glaucoma and Diabetes Clinic Supplies, and Fund Visual Examinations and Eyeglasses for Needy Schoolchildren and Adult Citizens of Palm Coast. And whereas the aforementioned Lions Club is sponsoring White Cane Days Friday through Sunday, February 18th, 19th, and 20th, 2011, to give the people of Palm Coast an opportunity to assist the Lions in this worthy project of helping the sight afflicted. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, urges all its citizens to support the worthwhile efforts of the Lions Club of Palm Coast, and be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, in recognition of the contributions Lions Charities Incorporated has made to the citizens of Palm Coast hereby officially declares February 18th, 19th, and 20th, 2011 as Lions White Cane Days, dated this first day of February 2011. City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor, Virginia Smith, City Clerk. Congratulations.
Well, thank you, sir. Councilman, thank you so very much. Mayor and fellow council members and staff, on behalf of the Palm Coast Lions Club, like to say thank you so very much for this proclamation. But I would like to, if I could, just personalize it just to, so that it's not just a formality. I want to read a couple of things that your constituents have said about this effort. This is from Sheila from Palm Coast. "I want to thank you so very much for the eye exam and glasses that you recently purchased for me. It's made a world of difference for me to be able to read things again. It's so wonderful to go to the grocery store and actually be able to read the prices and to be able to read directions to prepare my meals. Thank you from the bottom of my heart." Sheila from Palm Coast. And then we have one from David from Palm Coast. "I'm writing this letter to let you know how sincerely grateful my wife and I are to you for the assistance given by Lions for my son's recent eye surgery, with the special grant that we received from the Lions International Foundation. My son received the operation that he, that has restored his sight. The doctors have told us he will now be able to live a normal life and complete his college education. This is something that could only have happened because of Lions and their generous supporters." And the final one, Wayne from Palm Coast. "I want to thank the Lions for their support of southeastern guide dogs. With my wonderful leader dog, I can go places and experience things I never could have without her. She is also a constant loving companion, and I enjoy the many hours we share together. Please let as many people as possible know what a difference Lions and their support have made in my life." Wayne from Palm Coast. So once again, thank you so very much for supporting our efforts. Thank you.
And to the Lions, on behalf of all the residents of Palm Coast, thank you for everything that you've done. It's been my pleasure to speak at your last two district meetings, and I hope to do so again, and congratulate you on your fine job.
And I will be around with that membership application, I promise you.
Agenda item number three, presentation by the Florida Urban Forestry Council for outstanding public educational programs. Mr. Landon?
Mayor, City Council. Bill, bring up our guest, too, please. You know, in almost, I know it's going to sound like a rerun, almost every meeting now we have another green award, but each one of them is unique and each one of them is special. But it does emphasize leadership of city council and emphasizing the importance of environmentally sound practices, et cetera. And tonight, we have the privilege of receiving yet another award for one of those new programs that we started. Bill and Carol were our lead people on this, and so I think Bill is, are you going to do the introductions?
Yes.
So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bill Butler.
Good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Greg Dunn with the Division of Forestry, and Mary Lou Hildreth, she's with the Urban Forestry Council, and they're going to say a few things about the project, and so I don't have to.
My name's Greg Dunn with Division of Forestry and the County Forester here in Flagler County. It was an easy nomination for this award for the education, after seeing what Bill and Carol's done out there at Palm Coast High School with the students out there, giving them another way of learning something outside of just schooling. And, you know, everyone looks at it and tells these kids need to go to school, school, school. A lot of kids are going to go vocational, you know, so they, it's good for them to have something outside of just, you know, the textbooks, to have their hands on so they learn more about it. This was a grant from the Urban Community and Forestry Grant with Division of Forestry through the U.S. Forest Service. There was no money out of pocket through the city, because it was all in-kind services through Bill, through the city employees, and through the school, the students. So it was a great win-win situation, and for the future, for educating the kids, and for having trees here in the City of Palm Coast. I think it's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I turn it off? Good evening, Council. My name is Mary Lou Hildreth, and I am the president-elect for the Florida Urban Forestry Council, incoming president for 2012, and I am also the mayor of the City of Keystone Heights, so I'm kind of familiar with being in this position, so I'm not exactly nervous. I'd like to give you a little brief background on the Florida Urban Forestry Council and why it's important for cities to be members. I apologize for 2009, that's what I get for cutting and pasting at the last minute, so it should be 2010. Go ahead. Who is the Florida Urban Forestry Council? Statewide nonprofit organization was established in 1990. We have over 400 members, and our mission is to educate the citizens of Florida on the importance of trees, including their benefits, and the best methods to plant, maintain, manage, preserve, and sustain the urban forest. Who is the Florida Urban Forestry Council? It consists of cities and counties, private arborists, horticulturists, landscape professionals, utility foresters, tree board members, tree advocates, interested citizens, and I can tell you, being the mayor of a city, it's been, I'm on their, I've served on their executive committee for five years, and it's amazing the things you learn and the benefits that the city gets by being involved with an organization like this. And we have just begun, we used to be associated with Trees Florida, but now we've created our own awards. It's Friends of Our Urban Forestry Awards. These are the categories they are awarded in. The City of Palm Coast was awarded the award for Outstanding Urban Forestry Educational A little bit about the project, if you aren't familiar. I also sat on the awards committee and reviewed all the applications. They come throughout the state, and it's, there's a lot of competition and a lot of good projects, but this one, we felt it demonstrated an innovative way to lower the cost of plant material by growing their own stock. It educates the students in the values of growing and maintaining trees by teaching them how to care for root systems, as well as the proper way to plant and prune trees. And the additional benefits are the students are educated on nursery design, management, and related professions, as Greg said, and teach principles of landscape design and energy conservation that trees provide, and provide trees on school properties where funding was previously unavailable. And one of the big things we also look for in the awards committee, we like to see partnerships, and you guys had a great group. You had your students, teachers, and your city green team staff, Florida Power and Light, City Public Works Crew, Flagler Wholesale Nursery, Austin Outdoor Inc., University of Florida Master Gardeners, the Flagler County School Board, the Flagler Palm Coast High School, and of course, the Florida Division of Forestry, whose grant made this project possible. So with that, I would like to make the presentation, and we'd like to get a picture for the website, so I don't know. This is the, the, wow. I feel like man away.
I feel like I know where that tree is.
It's in, it's in the angel tree in north, south of Rhode Island. Yeah.
Why would I be surprised? Why am I not surprised?
No, we do it different.
Maybe we could get Mayor and City Council, too.
Get them first. That's good.
That's good. There you go.
That's good.
It's all right.
Four, five, six.
So, thank you, and I encourage you guys to continue to be members of the Florida Urban Forestry Council, as well of the League of Cities, and your local league as well. And join the League of Mayors, Mayor. Because I belong all.
Thank you very much. It's not often we have a mayor of another city stand before us to give us an award, but thank you so much. Item number four on our agenda, presentation of new priorities for the Chief Financial Officer, Jeff Atwater. Representing CFO Atwater is Randall Brown. Mr. Brown, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to speak on your agenda. My name is Randall Brown. I'm the outreach coordinator for the Florida Department of Financial Services, and I have the central Florida region, and I represent Chief Financial Officer Jeff Atwater. I'm here tonight to talk about some of the priorities that the CFO has upcoming. And a lot of those are coming from the recent CFO, including fighting financial fraud, abuse and waste in government, and reducing government spending and regulatory burdens that chase away capital, also ensuring transparency and accountability of spending. Now, an example of that is, we all know about the first District Court of Appeals building in Tallahassee, the Taj Mahal up there, as they say. It was way overpriced, and he is, because of that, and due to that, he's ordered bills now to be approved in public hearings, you know, coming from that. He's also determined to fight the high costs of financial fraud, including insurance, Medicaid, and public assistance fraud. An example of that is, on the second day of office, he oversaw the arrest of a scammer, and I'm pretty sure it was in New Smyrna Beach, that it was an $11.5 million case, and he was arrested on his second day in office. He's also making PIP fraud, personal injury protection fraud, is one of his highest priorities. Stage car accidents and fake injuries costs us all about $400 a year in extra premiums, and that's why he's putting so much emphasis into this. As a matter of fact, four of the cities in Florida are among the top 10 in the country for PIP fraud, three in South Florida, and I think Tampa is number four. This week, he announced seven PIP frauds, PIP fraud arrests stemming from 170, one case was $170,000 in fraudulent billings that were paid, you know, through PIP fraud. He's also focused on consumer protection, and that's where I come in. I've done a number of presentations right in this room, and he says he helps foreigners make informed decisions on insurance matters and financial decisions. It says claimants in victories of the Deepwater Horizon oil spill. We had a lot of that going on in Pensacola, and we did a, we did a presentation right here in Palm Coast, just after that oil spill, educating consumers about the signs of financial fraud and how to avoid it. On Thursday, at the VFW Lodge here in Palm Coast, we're doing a safeguard our seniors presentation. And returning unclaimed property. This is, I don't know how many people have, how many of you have put your name, have looked for your unclaimed property, but it's amazing what's there. It's over $1 billion worth of unclaimed property. One billion, not one million, $1 billion's worth. So please, go into our website, which is www.myfloridocfo.com, and look up unclaimed property. Plug your name in, you'd be surprised in what's there. You know, it's amazing. Also, I'd like you to go in, and if you want to schedule a workshop like the type we're doing on financial fraud, safeguard our seniors, identity theft, please call 1-877-693-5236. That's 1-877-my-F-L-CFO. Also, you can call my personal number, it's 1-386-323-0914, and I'd be glad to make a presentation to you, you or your group, on any kind of fraud situation. I want to thank you for having me, allowing me to speak, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Give our best wishes to CFO Atwater.
I will.
And if he can reduce government's waste and spending, more power to him.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, ordinance repealing ordinance 2004 and adopting revised stormwater utility ordinance. Mr. Reichman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, mending and restating Chapter 24, Article 3, Division 3, Stormwater Management Utility of the Code of Ordinances, providing for conflict severability codification and an effective date.
Mr. Landon?
Mayor, City Council. I'm already there, guys. In fact, if you want to see some consultant and staff surprised, they're going to be surprised with my introduction of this item, because, you know, we've made a number of efforts to fine-tune our proposed stormwater ordinance revisions. You have received two ordinances in the past and rejected both of those after receiving public comments, and asked us to attempt to work out some of the issues that you heard from residents, businesspeople, property owners in town. We have spent a number of weeks doing exactly that and attempting to see if we couldn't make amendments to the, or not amendments, but revisions to the proposal to make it a little more user-friendly, make it more fair to all parties, and address many of the concerns. We've come a long ways. We've made a lot of changes. We have presented those changes to the City Council, and you've given us good feedback. You've stressed that we need to get something moving forward, something adopted, because we have people, property owners out there today, that are paying towards stormwater, paying stormwater fees, but aren't receiving any benefit from those because they're not actually using our system. So we've been trying very hard to move forward. Last Friday, we held another, what we're calling stakeholders meetings. Interested parties are asked to come and provide us feedback. We, once again, continue to hear more comments, actually, some new comments, and we have more tweaks to it as a result of those comments, and believe that we're keep fine-tuning it. Today, I met with a representative of some of the major property owners, and made some additional headway to resolve some of the conflicts on the very large, what we've been calling bulk properties. Believe that we've started a dialogue that feel comfortable, that there's a better chance we can actually reach an agreement, and actually make additional changes so that we can attempt to bring on as many supporters of the ordinance as possible. I don't have any confidence that when you make changes, and some people who've never had to pay a fee have to start paying a fee, that we will make everybody happy. But we do know we have some property owners who will be paying less, some will, most of the residents in town will, their fees will stay the same, but we also have some people who will be paying more, and trying real hard to make that as fair and equitable as possible for all parties. I believe that with a couple more weeks, we might be able to reach an agreement, or at least come closer to reach an agreement. So what I'm going to ask you to do tonight is delay this two more weeks, actually, if you would continue it for a date certain, because I do think we need to stay moving forward to get something done that's fair to everybody as quickly as possible. But right now, my recommendation is to give us a chance, see if we can't work out some additional differences with some of the major property owners in town, and bring this back to you in two weeks for a public hearing. I'd rather do that than debate it tonight and then just have to start all over again.
Are the proposed changes that you're discussing significant enough that you couldn't do the first reading tonight and then amend it for the second reading?
I think you could, you could do that. That is an option. I'd be happy to go through the presentation. I, in talking to their representatives, they requested, can we have two more weeks before that first reading? I did stress to them that, I think all five of you have indicated one time or another publicly, we need to do something, and options. But it's always better to see if you can't work out those final details. I think they know that the idea that if you're going to use the system, you pay nothing, that that concept is not something I'm going to recommend. You have that option always, but I'm not going to recommend that. So they know that we have to come up with something that, at least, they pay some portion of the standard fee, that's going to be a reduced portion because they're getting a reduced level of service, because they don't have swells and those type of things we maintain. But see if we can't come up with something that's consistent with some of the other cities in Florida, et cetera.
Well, we've been at this for two years. I don't suppose two more weeks is going to make a huge difference, but I do think we need to resolve this, and for the benefit of those people, as you mentioned, who are unfairly paying. Counsel, would you be willing to offer a motion to?
I'll make a motion to delay the first reading of the stormwater ordinance to a date certain of February 15th, 2011.
A second. It's a nine o'clock meeting, just for the record.
Okay. Or soon thereafter.
Yes.
I don't think we hit it at nine o'clock exactly. Moved and seconded that we table this to a time certain, February 15th, 9:00 AM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries without objection. Good luck, and back to the drawing board.
Thank you.
Negotiating table, or whatever. Agenda item number six, resolution approving in here to local agreement with Flagler County Supervisor of Elections. Mr. Landon?
Mayor, City Council, it's obviously that time of year again. I think we're going to need to have someone change that, please, Mr. As you know, we really are not, have the resources or the knowledge to hold our own elections. We've always contracted with the county supervisor of election to hold city elections, also with the assistance and help of our city clerk. So Virginia, our city clerk, has been working with supervisor of elections offices on, office on the details for our municipal elections to be held this fall. Those details are, include some fairly significant changes. They also are very consistent with what we've done in the past. We are trying to be more efficient and save money, but also try to make it as convenient as possible for the voters. So Virginia is going to present the major changes to the proposal. The rest of it is a lot of boilerplate information that just refers to state law, but Virginia, please take it from there as far as what the really significant issues this agreement would accomplish.
Some of the key issues that we've been discussing at workshop have been early voting, polling locations, and a possible amendment to our charter. The early voting will be held at the supervisor of elections office for the primary and the general election. The polling locations for the primary and the general will be at six locations as a mass voting, and the voters will then have the option of picking any location of those six to vote at. There won't be limited to their own precinct. The charter amendment that we discussed will be so that we can change the years of city elections to correspond with federal and state elections, so that will be switched to the even years from the odd, and it will require future action by the city council, and that will be the ordinance that we discussed, that Mr. Reichman brought to your attention last week, that we can change the charter by an ordinance, and we will bring that to the voters on this year's ballot to vote for that option, to change the election. The polling locations, the Yacht Club and Buddy Taylor Middle School were not, they didn't meet the requirements for the Evid machines, so therefore, we switched to Wadsworth Elementary and Matanzas High School. So our six choices for the designated polling locations will be the Flagler County Library, Palm Coast Community Center, Belter Elementary, Flagler County School Building, Wadsworth Elementary, and Matanzas High School. And those are the, the bright blue stars are the locations of the six polling places for the mass voting for the primary on August, sorry, excuse me, on September 13th, and on November 8th for the general election.
Is that it?
That's it.
Counsel, questions? Before we open the meeting to the public, just a couple of comments. Our current practice has 20 polling places, and that means the supervisor election has to pay for a staff of approximately seven people for each of those locations. With the greater trend toward early voting, which has been increasing each year in the last several years, fewer and fewer people are voting on the actual election day, they're voting before. So in an attempt to consolidate and save significant money, both for the city and for the supervisor of elections, we are proposing six polling places, but unlike previous where you had to vote at your particular polling place, any resident can vote at any of the six. So if you happen to be in the south end of the city or in the north end of the city, you can vote wherever's convenient for you. The other, the other change that's under consideration by counsel, the city charter now specifies that our elections are held in the odd years, the off years. So supervisor of elections has to set up a polling place just for Palm Coast. Obviously, that's expensive. Whereas if we were to change the charter, amend the charter, to bring our election day in correspondence with the state and federal elections, the polling places are already established, they're already in place, we just become one more component to the ballot. This should save additional significant money, taxpayer money for the city. So that's, that's what is being proposed. At this point, I'd like to open the meeting from the public, and for the public wish to be heard on this agenda item. Just give us your name, limit your contribution.
Jackout, Palm Coast. To change the charter, excuse me, isn't that a process that has got to go through the state? That's, I'm just wondering, and if you're going to do that, why don't you just? That's, I'm just wondering, and if you're going to do that, why don't you just put a whole new vote in for the charter? I still say we need seven council people.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Bill McGuire. I live in Palm Coast. How much does the election cost and how much will we save by moving to six polling places as opposed to previous? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Ron DeCosta, Palm Coast. Now, if this takes place, if this is approved, does the mayor and the two city council get an extra year or one less year?
Next speaker. Next speaker. See no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. The first question was, how does one implement a charter change? According to our charter, there are two ways that a charter amendment can be initiated. It can be amended by a petition of 15% of the voters, or it can be, an amendment can be proposed by a majority of the city council. In either case, it, any change to the charter has to go on the ballot and it has to be approved by majority of the voters. And no, it does not have to have any state approval. It is, it is the corporate charter of this municipal corporation, so we can change it without any state approval. Virginia, can you give us some idea of what the cost is and what the savings will be?
Yes, the, the cost will be approximately $1,000 per day, per polling place, and that was the same as if we were going with the 21 precincts as well. However, the, the change is a thousand, the difference will be 6,000 per the primary and the general. However, it would be approximately 21,000 plus for the 21 precincts.
Can we go back and simplify that a little bit?
Yeah.
The first election under the old way with 21 polling places was $21,000 for the primary, or the?
For both the primary and then 21 for the general.
Right. So a total for the entire election?
Would have been 42,000 plus.
Forty-two thousand, okay. And under the new proposal, we're now talking?
Approximately 12,000.
There.
Okay.
A significant savings.
And if we move to the even number of years, there should be even additional savings because the supervisor of elections is not setting up a polling place just for us.
Correct.
Let me stress that a little bit further because the figures that Virginia gave you are polling place costs. There's also cost for printing the ballot, for training, some of the others. The estimated cost we have is $60,000 per election, or $120,000 total. That would get cut down to probably for the city, less than $10,000 if we were part of the same ballot as the county, state, and federal. Huge savings for the city and therefore the taxpayers. So there's, there's more to it than just the polling days, but that's the difference between the 21 and the six that Virginia counted on, described to you. But actually going to the general election of, you know, corresponding with state and federal, it's even more savings.
And of course, there is one additional collateral benefit. In all probability, if we have our city elections coinciding with the state and federal elections, you will probably get a better voter turnout and a more representative vote of the people. To the question of the extra year, Virginia, the charter change, while it could be done for the upcoming election, in which case there would be extra years, council rejected that out of hand. We're not going to change the, the polling until after the charter is changed by a vote either up or down at this, this coming election. So what hap, what are the options that are open to those who would be running in 2012?
That will be designated in the ordinance proposal that the city attorney and I will be drafting in the next couple of months to bring before you for action. Right now, we don't have any suggested changes that, that I'm working on. Attorney Reichman might have an idea better than I do.
Let me, let me try though, it's, you know, you either have to, and the voter, this would be on the ballot, so the voters would be approving this. You would either have to make the terms for that one time, three years or five years versus a typical four years. Typically, what most cities do when they make these kind of changes is they add the year. But once again, that has to be approved by the voters in the process we're going through. You first have to put it on the ballot for, to make it three years or five years, and then they'll get to say thumbs up or thumbs down to that. So that decision's really not being made tonight. We are just letting you know that as we proceed with the supervisor election, because that's really what the contract is, is just between the city and supervisor election, that this will be another item on the ballot based on this agreement. The details are forthcoming. They have to be resolved before, I think it's March, is that one? Or is it later than that, Virginia? That we have to have an answer to the secretary of election, or excuse me, supervisor of election.
We have to have it submitted to the supervisor of elections office before qualifying period ends, which is August 9th.
August 9th, okay. So we have some time for that, that issue.
And the final question or comment from Mr. Carroll about other changes to the charter, again, there are two ways that a charter change could be initiated. It could be initiated by an action of the city council, could be put, put forth. It could be by petition of the residents, or there is a third option, and that is by action of an appointed charter study committee, a committee that would be appointed by city council that would bring forth recommendations that could or could not be acted upon by council. That issue was raised by me six months ago or so. There was no interest on the part of city council to undertake a charter study commission. So at this point, absent action from the citizens, we'll make this one change, potentially, or put this one change on the ballot to see if, if the voters want to make that change. Okay, we're at city council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion on agenda item number? Mr. Lewis.
Is there any monies that must be submitted to the clerk through the supervisor of election?
For this election?
Yes.
There's a deposit that's going to have to be made after the interlocal has been approved and signed, which I believe is in section three. We have to pay an initial deposit of $30,000 for the primary by March 1st.
Mrs. DiStefano.
Back to the charter for just a moment. If the citizens want the charter changed or the, and appeal to the council, we would set up a committee, and a charter change would, would, it would be studied and prepared, and it would, it, it's not feasible to get everything done by the election for this year. So we want to get, we want to try to save the city money by getting on the state and general election. However, that does not preclude that somewhere down the line, if the citizens feel it's important to change the charter, then we would have to appoint a charter committee. It just can't be done overnight. It's, you got to have a committee working on it and look at all the pros and cons of what you want to change. So the reason we're doing this right now is to save the city money and get on the program with the general and, and the state election. Thank you.
And one more comment, if I may. The terms of the city charter, as it was approved back in 1999, specified that there could be, would be no changes to the charter for the first 10 years. That anytime after 10 years, and we're now in that after 10-year period, the charter could be changed. But for the first 10 years, there was a prohibition against charter change other than issues of city boundary. So with, with all that being said, is there a motion on agenda item number six?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This brings us to the consent agenda items seven through 10. Does anyone wish to remove any item from the consent agenda?
Item number nine.
Item number nine. Anyone else wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? If not, may we have a motion to approve consent agenda items seven, eight, and 10?
Mr. Mayor, a motion that we approve items seven, eight, and 10?
Aye, second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number nine, Mr. Lewis.
My question is just to look at the, the way this, the price agreement is structured and the fact that this is a one-year renewal of the price agreement between Strickland Sod Farms and Volusia County. Is this a, who am I talking to?
Depends on what your question is.
Depends on what your question is. We'll play it by ear. Don't, don't look at me. We'll try and direct the public works.
Okay. When these agreements are determined, is there a, a, any competitive action taken or is it just an automatic renewal?
No, that, that's correct. If we're piggybacking on a contract, it's because that entity did the bidding process and selected that particular vendor.
And then how often can they get a renewal on this arrangement?
I guess that would depend on the contract. There's probably terms in the contract that describes whether it's renewable.
We have to?
I'm not sure the status of this one.
We have to abide by the contract that we're piggybacking on. So whatever that, that contract calls for is what, and then that entity in this case, I think it's Volusia County, has to renew it based on the, the terms of that contract. If they do, then, then we can renew it also.
Okay. So it is, for those other entities out there that they're in the same business as Strickland, do they ever get a chance to participate in a bid like this, in a future bid, rather?
Absolutely.
So this doesn't preclude then?
No. You know, everybody always talks about how we in government should try to pool our resources and, and actually be more efficient by, you know, having the, the quantities and the, the power of that quantity of purchases. And, and so we actually do that throughout Florida with this provision for piggybacking. It does require that one of the entities go through a competitive bidding process that's open for anybody who is qualified. And then when they do that, it, it actually says in the contract that other local governments, cities and counties in Florida can piggyback on that. So when we do this, all of the entities know that there's potential for additional business. And hopefully, we all get a better price because of that quantity break. That's exactly what we talk about all the time, working with, you know, Flagler County or Banel or, or other entities here and around us. But in this case, we can actually piggyback with Volusia County and hopefully get a better price for everybody. But it's still a very competitive process. We, we have to go with the, the specific details of that contract. We can't renegotiate something other than what is in that contract. So then when this particular contract or any of the others that we piggyback on expires, then goes back out, everybody gets a chance to bid again, and they all know that there's a potential that it's going to be more than just that one entity, and hopefully they give us that quantity break. There are entities that piggyback on our contract. I know our concrete contract, Flagler County, they found out that we had a much better price than what they were getting, and they piggyback on our, on ours and saved, you know, all of us Flagler County taxpayers' money in that process. So it's actually a very good process. It's what we talk about all the time, trying to, you know, use that, that buying power together and coordinate. That's exactly what that does.
Thank you.
Other council questions? Mr. D'Amico.
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor. The other nice thing about this one is Strickland sod farms, you know, we keep talking about, let's try to keep our dollars local. Here's a case where local guy's providing it to another county, and we're piggybacking on that, but it's, you know, it's, it's keeping local people supplied with a job and providing a benefit to local businesses. So I think this is a great idea.
Other council questions? If not, let's open the meeting to the public. Any from the public wish to be heard on agenda item number nine, piggybacking on a sod contract.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. Last week, we had a pretty big, heavy rain. I don't know if you had it in your neighborhood, but in my neighborhood, we had a heavy rain. I stood out there with my umbrella, and not one drop fell into my, from my property into my swale. The only water that came into that swale came from God's hands. So I, at this time, put you on notice, I want my fees deducted. No, it's not a laughing matter. This is a serious thing. Because first of all, I don't know who stakeholders are, you know, but I thought that everybody in the, in the city was a stakeholder in whatever goes on, regardless of what, what kind of property you own, whether it be 80, 80 square feet or it be 4,000 acres. We're all stakeholders. We all have a, an interest in what goes on in this, in this city. So if you're going to give a guy with 5,000 acres?
Is this relevant to the sod issue?
Ah, you took it off, you took it off. Oh, no, not the sod issue, no.
Well, that's where we are.
That's what laws.
No, this is, this is on a contract to purchase sod. I think your comments are better.
You just said this was considered the public participation.
No, no. Not quite yet. Only on agenda item.
But hold that thought.
Come back, come back in about a minute.
Hold that thought.
Come back in about a minute. I won't even charge you for that minute and a half you took.
Well, that's a tracking.
Is there any public comment on agenda item number nine, the contract to piggyback on sod purchase? See no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, come back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll motion to approve it since any rain's going to fall onto this sod as well.
Is there a second?
You pulled up at the second.
Secondly, yes.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to public participation. Does anyone from the public wish to be heard on any item not on today's agenda?
Anybody at all.
Mr. Carroll, come on.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. And I wish to thank Nesta Ebbe and the city manager for getting in touch with me about Whiteview Parkway East and letting me know what's going on there. I, I appreciate it. I, I have people asking me about this walkway, when are we going to get a walkway along there? And I think I have an answer for them, or I got an answer anyway. And I appreciate the call. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can you share their answer with the rest of us?
Share it? Thank you, guys.
Next speaker.
It's not on the sod.
Okay, fair enough.
I'd like to go back to May 18th, 2004. That was the evening that the then-city manager, Mr. Kelton, proposed a 10% utility tax, electric utility tax, to be specific, in which the council voted down with a three to two vote, and which I, prior to that vote that night, discussed vehemently with the panel, with the council, that this was not the way to go. I don't believe in the electric utility tax. I don't believe in many of the taxes. We are the citizens, we own the property, why should we pay a tax on what we own? With that said, the people who truly deserve recognition rarely receive it, and I think tonight, it's time for a little self-praise for two sitting members of the council, Councilwoman DiStefano and Mayor Nets. As to the others, you will forgive me, you didn't vote on this, so I can't include you. I asked the property appraiser to draw off some figures. One is sufficient. Let's go back to 2004 year-end, the number of homesteaded homes. 22,656, but let's use 20,000 as a base. Now, this doesn't include rental properties, okay? But they would too, would have paid the electric utility tax. Now, using just the 20,000 base and extending it because I truly am unable to calendarize the number of homes and when they were built each year. But they too would have paid the electric utility tax. Now, using just the 20,000 base and extending it because I truly am unable to calendarize the number of homes and when they were built each year and the tax applicable to it. If we use just the 20,000 base of homes back in 1984 at at least a minimum of a $2 charge for the electric utility tax, be proud of yourselves. We have saved the citizens of Palm Coast in excess, far in excess, of over $3 million. Real dollars that they have been able to put in their pocket. Thank you very much, Mayor Nets and Mrs. DiStefano.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I might point out that Palm Coast is one of a very few cities in the state of Florida that does not have this electric utility tax. Yes. Next speaker, please. I'm going to start you over at zero.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. I'm not going to repeat myself. But I just want to know, who are the stakeholders in this county, in this city? And why aren't the rest of the public invited to these meetings that you have with these stakeholders? Whether a man owns 5,000 acres or an 80-square-foot acre makes no difference. We all pay, and we all enjoy what we get from the city, and we all contribute to that enjoyment, whether it be by volunteering or it be by our taxes. And it's mostly by our taxes. So if you're going to give anybody a break on their swales... And you've got to remember this, too. In the future, these people that own these five and eight and $10,000... Their $10,000 acre lands, they're going to have to have swales put in eventually. Because I know it's not going to be empty lots forever. And when they start to develop, they're going to put in... Swales have to be put in. Who's going to pay for this? Who pays to maintain it after that? Now, all this money's got to come from someplace. So where it's coming from is my pocket, and their pocket, and your pocket. So if you don't care about money, then you just vote the way you want. But the point here is, anybody gets a break, it's everybody. If you're going to give somebody a 75% break, then you've got to go through the whole process of seeing who, like myself. Right? I haven't used a swale now in over a year. But you still take them at $8 a month. So take that into consideration. And I don't particularly care to pay for somebody else's leisure or whatever you want to call it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Bob Jerkle, Palm Coast, good evening. I had an afterthought on the change of polling places. You're going to change from 21 to six. That means ideally, you would have three and a half to four times of voters at each polling place than you have now. So you're going to have to have more equipment. Now, you made a suggested placement. I assume you put some thought into it. But say, one place, say the library, gets 10 times what a district would get now. How do you tend to handle that? You're going to need 10 times the amount of equipment or 10 times the amount of people to avoid having people not being able to vote because of crowding. Okay? One more to... One more I ask. Always have a problem, Old Kings Road and US-1, where they meet in the northern part of the city. I came in last night. That is dark as dark can be. You can't find the road. Coming off US-1 is very difficult to turn. I know that's part of the city, part of the state, part of the county, but we need a light there. And I talked to Mayor Nets about it on the side. I think we really do, before somebody gets hurt. It's an excellent way to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Next speaker.
Hi, my name's Cheryl Murphy. I live in the forgotten area of Seminole Woods. We are still part of Palm Coast. We do have a park. We don't have a sidewalk. We've been here 15 years, 16 years, and we've always been neglected. There are no bicycle paths. There are no sidewalks. You guys are trying to save money, but I see two on each side of Belter. Each side got a sidewalk, bicycle path. I'm a little bit miffed about it. I think we pay our taxes over there, too, and I think we should be considered a little bit more over there, even though it's on the other side of the road. Okay? So other than that, I also have a question. When they finally gave us a red light at Seminole Woods, finally, safety reasons, really good reason, what happened to the off-ramp to Seminole Woods, which connects people to Route 1 and 100? You know, 100, when you're going east towards the ocean, there's no off-ramp to Seminole Woods. You're stuck at that light five or six times because one person's sitting there, or two, they get through, and then you still can't make a right turn on to Seminole Woods.
You're talking about a right turn on a red lane?
Huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, at the light.
Excel D cell with a turn.
I understand cost and efficiency, but while that was being put in, nobody considered having an off-ramp put into Seminole Woods. It's not a little artery. It's a period big artery that takes you to Route 101. I get them confused, 1100. So it's traveled a lot. Since I live in Seminole Woods, I'm quite aware of it. And then I have one other minor question. I'm a senior citizen. I love our town center. I love our ponds. I love the little ramp you can walk out there and watch all the birds flock down here on the end of the town center towards Kings Road, the end of it. Why don't we have anywhere to park? I can't walk three miles to that thing. Why is there nothing there for anybody to pull over? When people were pulling over and fishing off of that ramp, you guys stuck a sign, "Don't park on the lawn." But you didn't give anybody an opportunity to park there, yet you put a nice little walkout that we could go out and watch the birds. But I have emphysema. I can't walk from the imaging school down to it, and I can't walk from Old Kings Road up to it. I'd like to be able to park a car there somewhere. You have it there. I'd like to see us be able to do that. That's one more expense, I know. But it's all the money going into the town center. We're paying for lights like crazy, and nothing's there. So I'm just wondering why there was nothing put there for the people to be able to pull over and get out and go look at the water and the flock of birds. I mean, there's hundreds. It's like a beehive there. It's beautiful. But you have to pull on the road and get a ticket. You have to pull in the yard. I can't. I'm too old to walk. And I just have one last question to ask.
15 seconds, so make it quick, please.
Three minutes, I thought? I have one last question. I'd like to know how many people responded to our postcards that cost us over $4,000 for people to buy a house down here?
Okay, we'll get you an answer.
I want to know how many. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll come back to close public participation. Go back to counsel. But first, let's see. Mr. Carroll, the stakeholders typically are those for whom a change is being proposed. There was no change proposed for residential homeowners, so therefore, you would not necessarily receive a special invitation. However, all these meetings are open to the public, and you're certainly welcome to attend. Who will pay for the future swales? I think I can answer that. When there is a subdivision, when there's a new development, the developer is required to make whatever stormwater improvements are necessary, whether it be swales, whether it be pipes, whether it be detention or retention ponds. But the second part of that question is, who then maintains it? The city of Palm Coast.
Mr. Mayor? Not all the time. Sometimes you have a homeowners association...
If you have a CED, yes, that's possible.
...that takes on full responsibility for the operation and maintenance. That's Grand Haven, right there.
Yep, yep. Okay. Next question had to do with the polling places. Virginia, what... In theory, if you, I guess, if you assume that you've got full occupancy on 21 polling places and you cut to six, you're going to have three times...
Four times as many.
Four times as many people.
There will be three EVID machines, which is the electronic registration system that will be used at each of the six locations, with two on a backup for all six locations, should anything happen to one of the three at each of the locations. That makes the process a lot faster for check-in. And then I'm not... I don't know how many little areas for each voter to vote in will be set up, but they assure me that for six mass locations for our city, the six locations should be plenty.
And Mr. Jerkle, I couldn't agree with you more about some kind of street lighting at Old Kings Road and US-1. It's dark. It's not an easy turn to negotiate. I've raised that issue before.
If I could maybe give you an update. The challenge there is there's no power. There's no electrical line to get there. So what we have actually...
Is it our road?
It's a... Old Kings Road is ours. US-1 is obviously a state. But we have ordered, they're on order, solar light. It's not going to be the same kind of power as a regular streetlight, but it will give you some indication that where that intersection is. We've also done some uplighting for the Ag Museum sign so that that, once again, will at least mark the intersection. We are going to place the pole light as close to the intersection as allowed by the state to light that. That's been on order. That's actually very efficient. The cost-wise was substantially less than running power for a long ways. And then we don't have the power bill every month also. So we are trying to address that. Everybody comments that that is just...
Yep.
You miss it, or you have to...
You wind up in the ditch.
Yeah.
There was discussion at one point about funding from the state for a visitor's center at that location?
Yes.
Has that... Has there been any progress on that? Because if that were done, then that would give you an additional opportunity to generate some lighting there.
Absolutely, and that would change that whole intersection. You would see it much better. It... I don't know the status of it. Mayor, you know, it was just on their list, and I don't know if it's met their five-year plan or not. If it does happen, I don't suspect it'll happen anytime soon.
Mr. Mayor, didn't it come off the county's... There was a list of five specific projects or whatever, and that one didn't make it, didn't it? We were concerned about the interchange and a number of other projects, and I don't think that made it to the final cut that was submitted by the county.
You may be right. Bike paths in Seminole Woods.
First of all, the... Talking about south of 100, Belter, there is a boulevard all the way from 100 south to US-1 includes a path. The very next... Well, let me back up. We do have a five-year master plan for paths, and that's why you see a lot of them going on right now. It is based on our master plan to try to get a path along all the streets that don't have driveways. So that would obviously include Seminole Woods. Seminole Woods is the next one on the funding cycle. Most of these have received... Well, all of our paths you see happening have received either developer dollars to support them or state dollars. Actually, they're federal dollars through the state, part of the stimulus package. So local taxpayers are paying a very small portion of all those paths. One of the criteria in why you see two paths on both sides of Belter is getting the P section to the schools, the parks, the swimming pool on the east side of Belter versus having the kids having to cross the busy street twice. And some of those are not, even have signals for them to cross. So that was the primary reason for that. Seminole Woods is on the list in the future. I think it's Sesame that also have a portion of it. That would also be part of the plan in the future. We are hoping that eventually we'll get additional grant dollars in which... At which time, Seminole Woods would be the next path we fund.
The right-on-red or right-turn Excel D cell lane from State Road 100 to Seminole Woods, I suspect the simple answer is that that's a state road.
Yes. If you're talking about on State Road 100, you... And...
Not within the province or purview of the city.
I don't think you're going to see that intersection. You know, Seminole Woods is a major, major street coming out there, but it doesn't have the kind of traffic that's going to generate either the city or the state to fund major improvements there.
The issue of a place to park near the... And I believe we're talking about...
Stormwater ponds.
The stormwater pond coming off of Old Kings Road.
Right. First of all, the fishing pier, the little boardwalk to walk out there is actually not something the city did. It's something the developer provided out there. And there is no parking, I agree. But really, as far as I know, the Community Development District for Town Center, which is responsible for those improvements along with the developer, I don't think they have any plans for parking along there. It was intended to be for, you know, the pedestrian-friendly bicycling, and it doesn't accommodate everybody. But I don't know that there's any room there for parking. I don't think there's any plans for it.
It's a... The developer built the stormwater treatment pond, right?
Yes.
And probably either had an easement or granted something from the Water Management District to put an observation deck there.
Right.
And they paid for that.
Right.
We didn't do that.
We did not do that. Had nothing to do with that.
And we don't pay it for the electricity, do we?
Well, that was going to be my next comment. The streetlights in Town Center were paid for by the developer. They're not paid for by the city.
I know they put them in. I'm not sure who pays electric...
I think they're paying electric.
Do they? Do they? Okay.
And I know I can answer the last question. The response to the postcards, they haven't been printed or mailed, so the response is zero.
No, Mayor, I haven't updated you all. We do have one response, just from the publicity in the media and the internet. Someone who hasn't even received one has said, "Oh, I would like additional information. I'm tired of the rain and snow." So we have received one response. I would like to add to that answer that, yeah, $4,000, $5,000 to send this out, but it would only take one person to come build a house, and we would probably, and just our fees and the sales tax for building a house quadrupled that investment. So it would take just the return on investment for just one person coming and building a home here for us. The city coffers, we get a return. That doesn't talk about the people that would be put to work, the business it would generate. You know, that is what that's all about, is trying to help the local economy, particularly the construction industry that has so many people out of work right now.
This brings us to discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Mr. Mormon?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Lewis?
Nothing.
Mrs. DiStefano?
I would just like to comment to the citizens that are listening to this broadcast tonight that last night, your city officials, along with the representatives from all the municipalities in the county, had an extensive meeting to discuss economic development. And we will continue to work with the other municipalities. But I think it is important to recognize that even if we could get an economic development program going, spend some money, I don't know where the magic switch is, that you could turn it on and all of a sudden you'll have employment. It's going to be a long road to run. And I just want the citizens to recognize that I feel your pain. I hear it every day. I hear it many times during the day, there's no jobs. But we are trying, and that's about all I can tell you. The other point I want to make is, ladies and gentlemen, it is not only in Palm Coast. And that's all I ever hear. There's nothing here. Well, I think it's everywhere across the country. It's not just here. So we hear you. We know you want to work. We want you to work. We want to have the economy turned around. We will work towards that end, and we will cooperate with the other municipalities in the county. But I will also protect your money. And because your money is my money. If you get taxed, I get taxed. If I, if you get taxed, I get taxed. So with that being said, I think it was an interesting meeting, but we've got to have a program before we start throwing money at it.
Mr. Maker?
I just want to chime in with that. What's, what's missing in the whole discussion is, and this is what the two-day meeting that they're proposing could possibly address, is to come up with a work plan that identifies what we need to do. And then from that list, you need to set a series of priorities on the list. And once you know what your priority is, then you can look at how much it's going to cost. And once we know how much it's going to cost, we can decide if we can rearrange things within our existing budget, which is my preference, or whether that's still not enough to cover it and I still have to go to the citizens for some kind of an increase. But my preference, just like Mary's, as Councilwoman DeStefano mentioned, is, you know, not to see anything happen with new taxes and I'd like to try to fund it from within our existing budget.
Since you've opened that door, I'll just offer a few additional comments on this concept of economic development. I tried to make the point on behalf of the residents of Palm Coast last night that, that economic development is not an end in itself. It's a means to an end. We are primarily a residential community with a lot of local, small businesses. The goal of economic development is to make that a sustainable community. Keep taxes as low as possible. Keep local business prospering. If we're successful with this postcard mailing, if we get a few folks building homes, you've added, whether there's one person on the street or 100 people on the street, when you repave the street, you've got to distribute the costs. So it's easier to distribute over more people. Every home that's built, there's one less vacant lot that accumulates wind-blown debris. One less lot whose swale has to be maintained by the city rather than by the homeowner. And every home that's built, there's two more people to go out and buy the donuts that are baked locally or be supporting our local business. The way you grow business is to increase consumerism, unless you have some other mechanism. So it's a complex issue and it's an issue that your city council is dealing with. Is Prosperity 2021 on the website yet, Mr. Landen?
I, Mayor, I was just thinking that, I talked to Beau this afternoon, that we're far enough along, particularly with the executive summary, that we need to start getting it out there more. So if it's not, it will be very soon. Because that is one of our goals, is to start letting people know.
I'd like to see that on the website as quickly as possible. There is an executive summary document that, that essentially summarizes the plan that the city council has adopted to move us forward as a sustainable community. I would urge everybody to look at it and comment on it. Love it, hate it, agree with it, disagree with it. That's the direction that this council is choosing to go. Mr. Lewis, you want another bite at the apple?
I don't want another bite at the apple. You all raised a question. On the meeting last night, one of the things that disturbed me is, and this is something that most people say about government, is that government is too bureaucratic. That was, there was a lot of discussion last night about the type of plan, the type of proposal and funding and all that, that kind of stuff. But you know, one of the problems with government is that you have too many layers. And if you keep adding a layer and a layer and layers to what, to your, to your structure, then you get nothing done. And I was very disturbed that, that there was no recognition other than the fact that the person who spoke for the Flagler Enterprise didn't make enough plea for that organization, since that organization, I think, is, follows pretty closely what Florida, Enterprise Florida, has set up for economic development. And I just don't believe that we should be reinventing the wheel. We have an organization that may not be doing the job, may have to be restructured, but to spend time and money just to reinvent something that's already there, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And I think that we should look at what we have, restructure that if necessary and make it work. But whatever it does, it should not require us to raise any taxes at all. We have to really work within our budget. And I think that's, that's important, even though people want, they're asking for money. Well, it was too soon to ask for money. No budget, rather, no money, working within your budget, I think that's really what you have to do. I do it every day when I take care of my expenses. You don't have it, you don't spend it.
Well, since everybody's getting a second bite out of the apple, Mr. Mormon, do you have anything you want to add?
I can't add anything to that, sir.
Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Discussion of city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Some more, you know, positive, good news on the environmental front. We've once again been recertified of Tree City USA, which is, you know, something we've learned to expect. But each year, we also receive the Tree City USA Growth Award, which is something that most communities don't receive. That means that we aren't just standing still with our green program. It actually means that it grows every year. So that is a...
And please, we're not talking about population growth. We're talking about tree growth.
Tree growth, yes, exactly. And our efforts that you heard tonight, tree farms and those type of things is what makes that happen. We have some other green awards that will be coming our way. It's really the green team has done, done a great job. Also want to highlight the fact that we do have the professional tennis tournament in town this week. I was in charge of the weather for them so far. That's about the only thing I've, I've done. But we, I think about 20 additional professional tennis players this year. They, they have rankings. They have, you know, those numbers that they, and that's why they go through this process. And I've been told that the standing of the players in town are higher than they were last year, too. So that's what, what happens with these, these events. Hopefully, we get a good reputation.
They mature.
And they mature and we get more players and better quality players. And that's exactly what happened, just, this just being our second, second year. A lot of positive feedback. And then, got to tell a story that even though I did receive a T-shirt that I gave to my wife for the half marathon she was wearing, someone said, "Congratulations." And she, whoa, whoa, I didn't, I wasn't there, but, I mean, didn't run. We were there, but the half marathon was a huge success for us also. And it went first year, got a lot of positive comments. I was in charge of the sunshine, but not the temperature that morning. But, because it was, it was chilly. But huge success with a lot of positive comments from everybody involved. Once again, people from out of town coming into town on all of these. Those 100 tennis players are all from out of town, staying in our hotels for the whole week and shopping, eating, et cetera. I saw one of them actually going to our local movie theater Sunday. So it was exactly...
Hydrolyte loading, popcorn, butter.
What it's all about. You know, once, once again, as the mayor indicated, Prosperity 2021 is obviously about creating jobs, but also trying to bring in those new dollars for existing local businesses. And also, we're working hard on trying to maintain and improve our existing neighborhoods. So I would encourage people to take a look at that document.